Time to digest this and they need time to sort through it. It's a large chunk of money for people to all of a sudden take a hit on. And I think people need the opportunity to think about it. You know, I've known about it for a while, so I've had the time. I've had that luxury. And I don't have a problem with it personally, but I think the residents need that same opportunity. And so I don't know if, do we need to do it this year? Or can we, can we take the time to do it? We might miss the cycle, the budget cycle. Because I know what it takes to get it into an assessment.
Yes.
And...
As I've said, that was our motivating factor. So let's, you know, let's spend time and study the issue, decide what to do, and get it into this cycle.
Thank you. Ken?
I just have a question. Howard, if, if we were to, you know, say approve this and then you went and spent, because the budget's really not approved until September, right?
On July 8th.
Or July?
You will adopt, no, you will adopt a tentative assessment.
Right.
And a tentative middling. But here it's a tentative assessment. That tentative assessment will show up on the tax bills, the proposed tax bills that go out in August. That's when people are going to actually really see it.
Sure, sure.
And that's when the calls will come in.
But I'm wondering if...
You won't, you can always go lower. You can reduce it in the September public hearing.
Right.
But is that going to give you enough time between July 8th and September?
First meeting in September.
Well, really, it's June.
Between now and...
If we said, okay, he has June, July, August, and September, four months.
I mean, as controversial as the lock was, I don't know that I had, I don't remember. I might have, but I don't remember getting a flurry of emails from people about the lock.
And we did. We talked about it. We've, we've been to every association and boat club meeting for over a year, you know, general membership meeting. We've communicated it through the newsletters, you know, your newsletter, et cetera, et cetera. What we can do in the next few months is, I'm not sure, because I don't know the scheduled meetings that we're having.
Well, maybe...
We can communicate it, that's for sure. We will do it with a special, you know, district email through the association.
Well, and I think also through all of our weekly reports, we can also be communicating the information. Yes, Rachel?
Because I know this is coming back in our budget discussion as far as how they're going to pay over time. I believe they've split it up over years, even though the project would be completed hopefully next year. That was the plan that I saw. Am I understanding that right?
Yes.
So maybe what we should do is maybe pull this out and at the next council meeting, just talk about this. And just have this as a, an item, so we can all understand and make sure, and we can advertise, and we can get the community here. I mean, it doesn't all have to be on, they've already talked, the Canal Advisory Board has talked about it for...
Since, well, I recall coming to meetings for January, February, March, and April, so...
So the good part of this year, they've already talked about it. And the residents, for whatever reason, did not go to those meetings. So maybe we need to have one last shot at it. So we're all in a full understanding of whether or not we want to put it in this next year's budget, and if that's the right thing to do.
Tom?
I would think that they need an opportunity to talk to the seasonal residents as well and get some communication back from them. I'm in agreement with most everybody that, I would like this, I would like to see it happen as quickly as possible and try and hold out that option, if we can do that.
Nancy?
Well, I think in addition to having email and perhaps mail communications, there needs to be a public meeting. There needs to be a way for people to actually physically meet. You know, there was a meeting, the actual Canal Advisory Committee had a meeting here in council chambers at one of your meetings. And the room was filled. It was overflowing, actually. People couldn't actually get in, everyone couldn't get in, because people wanted to voice their opinions. And I think the same could be even more so with this one. So I think it's, I don't disagree that this, this project needs to happen. It's just this needs more discussion, in my opinion.
And perhaps a meeting could be set up either at the Civic Association, so that the Canal Maintenance Advisory Committee could hold that, that session and explain it. I think you've done an excellent job in terms of doing the study. I think that, again, for safety purposes, it is needed. So I would have no problem in terms of moving as a council to say, we're going to move forward on it. But at the same time, our community does need to be aware of why we would be moving forward on it. So I think we have sufficient information at this point in time, at least at, at this juncture. And I think we can then look at moving again on our budget to go to the next step.
I'm not comfortable with that.
Can I?
I'll go ahead.
If I can make a suggestion?
Yes.
We do have a meeting scheduled for June for the Burnsthorpe Advisory. If, and I know that agenda just went out, but if we could maybe reissue the agenda and add an item specifically calling for public participation. It, and then, in taking the suggestion from the council, if at our next city council meeting, we could have an agenda item for public participation.
I agree with that.
That would give two opportunities during the month of June. And then you can weigh it and give some feedback to staff on whether you want to do the higher tentative rate in July, recognizing that by August, if you get enough input back, you may change your minds and not go forward and delay it another year.
Howard?
You live in Burnsthorpe Isles?
Yes.
Are there enough people still here to be able to attend the meeting as opposed to having the meeting when a lot of the seasonal residents come back? I question that.
Yeah, I don't know the exact numbers, but if you put together the non-president, non-here property owners, and believe me, we have some in Switzerland that own a lot, but they don't live here. I know that because we've done that mailing before. And that cannot be done in a reasonable amount of time, getting the tax rolls, doing the mailings, et cetera. It's quite an undertaking. Are there enough here at this time of the year, like every place else? It's, you know, roughly half, to answer your question. So a lot of the residents will not be able to dissipate, that's true.
Yeah.
Well, I, I thought if you did get a meeting together and you could let the, the people who are not here, and maybe we could set up some type of Skype, you know, that, that is out there. That technology is there. We could use that, so they could, they could see that. But for me, I don't live there, but I look at this and we, you know, we filled the event center with people who want to have a cut through, but if they can't get out of their canal system, so I kind of, in my mind, and maybe I'm not looking at a different, the right way, all those people want that cut through. If they can't get out of their canals to get to the cut through, then what, I mean, I'm just saying that, so...
It's a different area.
Well, it's a different area.
Different area, but, but the point is...
It's a different issue. I agree with this. I agree with the safety issue. That, I don't think anyone is going to disagree with that whatsoever.
Right.
So let's take that, let's take that off the table. It is that this issue has not had the opportunity to be fully vetted within the Burnsthorpe Isles community of all the, the canal property owners, so that they are aware that it's going to happen. I had people call me this week, what is this? And just irate about it. And, and when I explained to them, they said, well, why didn't we know? And, so people don't feel like it's been, the process has been transparent.
So would you recommend that we postpone it a year? Postpone the discussion of this, so that the, again, the seasonal residents have an opportunity to come back?
It's unfortunate, but I, I think that that's my feeling.
Rachel?
Well, if we're going to reach, have a, a meeting, a public hearing or quasi, you know, we're going to have to do it in winter if we're going to address all those seasonal residents. That's right.
I, I think, you know, that's fine if you want to put it off for a year, because it is going to be a substantial increase into their assessment. And we want everybody to understand that. But on the other side, you know, we have South County Coalition and Nancy, I mean, we have great communication with the people out there. So, I mean, we can't stop our city government from churning because we have seasonal residents. I mean, you know, because they, they own property here, so that, they need to stay informed, just because they're not here physically. And I think most of them do that and are in communication with us. So, I mean, I'm not feeling totally comfortable to say, yes, we need to do it this year until there is more input. Put it off a year might be okay, but I, I think, you know, we could address it this year if we, if we did reach out and had, I think we should put it on the council agenda and have it stand alone and have it on the Canal Advisory Agenda too, and at least explore and have people time to give feedback.
Ken?
Well, we have till September.
Nancy?
Well, I'm comfortable with us at least getting an indication from people, at least letting everyone who is here know. I don't disagree with that, Rachel, in that if you are a snowbird, you know, if you own property here, it doesn't mean that, you know, you shouldn't pay attention to what's going on where you own property.
Especially when our budget takes, all this takes place in the summertime.
So, but I think we need to make a reasonable effort to let people know that, that this is going to be discussed.
I think probably moving forward. Tom, did you want to make any...
Yeah, I just, I was just thinking that with our modern communication systems, we should be able to establish a proper communication with, with those that are not here and get it, and get a census of where they, where they are on it.
Well, do we, do we see this as an issue of to do it or not do it? Or do we see this as an issue of safety and it needs to be done, but that the issue is just that we need to communicate so that our residents understand what has happened and the research that has been done behind the project? Now, I think those are two different things. Rachel?
That's why I would like to see it come back with a proper presentation, much like what probably the Canal Advisory Board had, so that we are all in the, you know, he gave a five-minute executive summary, I would call it, maybe a little bit more in-depth, just so we understand exactly what the scope is. And they haven't bid it out. They have a placeholder number and that we have, you know, just like we would any other project that we take on.
Is that agreeable?
Yes, I think that we need the communication, absolutely, both at the, at the Burnsthorpe Isles Canal Advisory Committee meeting, as well as at council. And all are adequately noticed somehow, to make sure that everyone knows it's happening.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your efforts.
At the next council meeting. Is that right? Okay.
We will place this on the June 17th council meeting as a separate item for discussion. And when is your, when is your BSI Canal Committee?
Next, the 9th.
June 9th?
Next Tuesday, yeah. Oh, like she said, the agenda just came out, but we'll get it modified and online. We can advertise through the, the channels that we have, which is our Boat Club, our association, and Ms. Prackey's newsletters. That reaches most people.
Okay. Thank you for your efforts. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Gary.
Please thank your committee as well.
Thank you.
If I may point out to you, in the, the project itself, if you'll notice, in 2016, staff has asked for a full year to do the permitting on this project. It would be the fall of 2017 where the construction would actually begin. And because of the cost of this project and how small the district is, they had asked staff to recommend to them options of how to finance it. The first choice they made was to begin the assessment in 20, in the fall of this year, so that they could start actually cash funding it instead of financing the entire amount. Given the need to, as you'd said, more fully that, the process with the public, we could suggest not doing the assessment this fall, but put it in the pro forma as a, an assessment in the following fall. That would give us a full year. It's always interesting, as soon as people start seeing that it is a number that impacts them, their participation in meetings will rise. So, we could then schedule a meeting this winter, when all the BSI residents are present, to have a full discussion.
Further discussion. I think that's a very good recommendation, Sharon, and I think we'll need to look at that as we look at the budget.
So when we get to the next part of the meeting, you can make that motion to just move it a year, if you so choose to.
I think that's a good option, too.
That would be the Burnsthorpe Isles discussion for capital improvements. Moving on to sanitation. The sanitation fund, as you know, the, the Packers are now expected to have at least a 10-year lifespan. It used to be seven. We have been fortunate, some years we have very heavy R and M. Kristin, if we can just move to the next one. In some years, we have lighter. Last year was, was a heavy R and M year, repair and maintenance for our Packers. So we are not suggesting to delay any one of the four Packers that are currently coming up on their, on their full 10 years.
Yes, Tom?
With regard to the retrofitting for CNG, we're not sure where we are on that at this point?
No, we are not. I know that you are having meetings with, individual meetings with a member of the school board and their staff. We have not heard back from No Petro regarding whether or not they are going to apply for a special exception. We were supposed to have heard from them last week, and now it's another week. I don't know when we're going to hear from them. At some point in time, we are going to have to move forward with ordering some new trash trucks. And if we don't have the CNG issue resolved or in a timely manner, then we're going to have to forego it and wait till the next round.
Tom?
A further comment. In investigating the CNG relative to the school board, I contacted a school board up in New York, and, and they indicated that one of the biggest problems they had when they switched over to CNG was retrofitting their buses. It became a big, big issue for them, the retrofitting. They said they, after, when they ordered new ones that were set up for CNG, that, they worked fine. So just a word of caution, if we, if we're going that way, I, we need to be concerned about that.
These are all new.
These would be new.
These are, it says retrofit.
It says retrofit.
Well, it's purchasing new trash trucks with CNG.
Okay, and that...
And, and Kathy just explained to me, this use of retrofit was incorrect. These would be trucks that are already designed for CNG.
Yeah, these are new, all right. But there's going to be a point in time when the repairs are going to be such that we're going to have to go forward and order.
Rachel?
They're not going to be ready next year. There's, I mean, I don't know how quickly they think they can build this station, but I don't think it's going to be that quick in a, you know, a year and a half, even to the end of next fiscal year. I think, you know, we're waiting around and waiting around. I don't think that's very prudent, you know, especially when we don't even know. We would have to get, you know, sanitation department to start researching what trucks are even available out there with those types of engines, and why would we look into buying those when we don't even have a station yet that we can fill them with?
Ken?
And we have an opinion from our attorney that they do have to come to us for a variance to put the CNG plant there. They haven't done that. They've received a letter. They haven't contacted us. I'm not against the CNG, but I'm not sure that they're going to be a good partner for the city. Somebody who doesn't communicate with us, whether even to have some type of negotiation, is not somebody I want to do business with.
Nancy?
I would tend to agree with that as well. We've been postponing this, and you see, we have a lump of, of trucks that, Packers, that we're going to have to purchase. Now we have this, you know, kind of a lump in the, in the belly of the alligator here, you know, or the snake. And so we've got, instead of having things staggered out over the course of time, and I don't think that we can delay.
I guess I would like to just raise a little different perspective on this. Looks like our fleet replacements, they're not only costly, again, increase the costs, and the new replacements, for the most part, cost twice as much as what they did when the first ones were purchased.
Yes.
In some cases, as I looked at the data, the maintenance costs were equal to the original cost of the actual vehicle. I mean, this is not only with the Packers, but even the other vehicles. Do we have our own maintenance people to take care of our vehicles?
For some of our vehicles, yes, but for most of our vehicles, we are now relying on outside contracts for maintenance.
I know that we have looked at this in the past. However, should be, should we start to reconsider outsourcing our waste management? I mean, these Packers are not only extremely expensive, but in terms of the maintenance to maintain them and to, again, whether they use CNG or they're regular or whatever, is this a time that we should look at, again, perhaps outsourcing this activity? I mean, it just, it just, it's a very, very expensive kind of thing to maintain. Yes, Rachel?
Every time we've looked at it, that I recall, we get less service for almost the same amount of money. And once we turn it over, we have no say-so. I'm, I think our residents are happy with the, what we're servicing now, especially with the yard waste and the two-day-a-week pickup. It keeps our city clean. And when you drive around the county and you see their recycling cart and their huge garbage cart, some of them are out there for days and days and days. And we have a lot of seasonal people, and I would just caution that if we do go to outsourcing, that they're going to do a one-week, one-day-a-week pickup, and it will affect the way our city looks and feels. And so for that, I think it's not broken. You know, yes, we are probably going to have to raise some rates, especially now that we've changed our recycling contract a little bit. But our rates have been flat for several, several years. So I would be in favor of keeping our system as it is, because it does contribute to the quality of life in our city.
Tom?
I would agree with Rachel on that. You know, if we outsourced it, the likelihood of a sanitation worker picking up the can and bringing it up to the door of one of our early residents is really not, not going to be there. I think we should move ahead irrespective of the CNG and just do what, what we need to do and, but, but not CNG stand in our way.
Right.
Any other, any other comments? I like what Ken has said, too. I think No Petro has not been a, a good partner in, in this situation. Nancy?
No, I would agree with Rachel on that. When I look at the overall picture, and we're going to be discussing another issue later, trash bags versus containers.
Yeah.
And that's been a very subject near and dear to my community.
Kathy loves this meeting.
So, but it, we have a very, we keep our city clean and we are, we are very flexible. And I think that losing that flexibility, maybe down the road, it might be the way to go. Switching to an automated recycling is one step, so we might be there someday, but I don't think today.
I wanted just to raise the issue again, because I know we would be asked again, outsourcing. Yes, Rachel?
And, you know, there's always that potential in 2020, we need three more trucks. So we're not, we're not out of it totally. We're just saying for this point in time, we have to move forward. And in 2020, there might be the most fabulous CNG garbage truck, you know, silent, you know, they, they tote that, that you can't hear it. I don't know if that's really true, but that's what they've said.
Electric.
Yeah. It's silent. So we would just be pushing it out instead of abandoning it totally.
Okay. I think we're ready to move on.
All right, thank you. The building fund, then, again, another enterprise fund, it's self-balancing. They are, their trucks have reached their 10-year life as well. However, Randy has suggesting, rather than purchase all three in one year, because they all have different mileages on them, he's just suggesting to replace the first one in '16 and then one each subsequent year, and he feels that that will work well.
Okay.
So we have been able to stagger those. The utilities, O M and R. Now, this is just your operating fund. This is not your capital fund. So if you'll recall, we, we established in the general fund an annual replacement policy. We would like to do that for all the other funds. Utilities is the one we're presenting to you today as an annual maintenance amount. This year's will be an exception, because we do need $600,000 for fiscal year 2016. We expect the base, we, if you look at the, the 10-year average, we've been spending an average of 338. But keep in mind, that's, that's been artificially lowered because of the economic situation we were in, and we were trying to avoid replacing anything that we couldn't put another Band-Aid on. So that's artificially low. It would be more realistic to say 450,000 would be the appropriate number. And we recognize that we have some extremely aging infrastructure in both of our plants. And so we are suggesting also as part of the policy to let that grow 50,000 a year. It's amazing what one of those blowers in, in the plant costs to replace. So we, it would grow from 450 all the way up to 600 in 2020. The exception, of course, we, we do need a Vector truck in '16, and those cost $300,000.
What is a Vector truck? Can you explain that?
Well, I, the terminology, I'm going to, Tom is here. Thank you, Tom. He, he will give a much more eloquent explanation.
I just thought, you know, we needed to explain that.
Yeah.
It's not, doesn't roll off the tip of the tongue.
Good morning. Tom Jackson, for the record. Vector is probably the incorrect word to use, because that's the Coca-Cola. Vector is a brand name. It is a vacuum sewer truck, where we clean out sewer lines, we, it carries a tank of water, we flush lines. The kids at Arbor Day love to watch us suck up gloves and do the sort of things. But it allows us to clean the gravity lines and the lift stations and to clear blockages. Our Vector truck, and, and Rick has one as well, Public Works has one as well, they have a finite lifetime. We work them hard. Both our departments work them every day, so. And unfortunately, they're a very expensive piece of equipment.
An essential component.
Yes, it's very, very important. Otherwise, we, nothing can do the work it does. Let's put it that way.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I think we need to keep it in the budget.
Yes. Tom, I appreciate your handling that. So if there's any questions, you have the entire list on the next screen of, of what will be replaced in 2016.
Questions?
I guess my question is going to become, come when we talk about the rates, and what is that going to do to the rates?
Okay. This policy will not affect rates at all. We, we had this design, we've had this design now for the last four years. In the pro forma, we have put $400,000 a year. Bumping it from 450 to 600 will not affect rates, because we've had enough growth in revenue to offset it. I think you'll see when we get to the financial discussion, it will be the RO plant that affects rates.
So this is just like the policy that we've made with the other reserves and the repair and replacement? This would just be another policy?
This is a...
We're basically already spending the money in that fashion?
Yes.
But it would be a policy saying, this is how we're going to do it from now until the next four years?
Yes. This would be an adoption of a program that we have already had in place. It, it is bumping it up a little bit higher, however.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, just to go along with the question you had, Rachel, when I looked at all these, the special funds and, and the enterprise funds, it's, you know, these are all individual businesses, and I commented to Howard about that. These are all individual businesses, and we're just checking a piece out of each one of their pro formas and looking at a piece of a pro forma, and it would, so it, it really is not a complete picture. It's really a, a difficult way to look at it, when we just review a slice out of everybody's pro forma.
When we get to the next discussion and we talk about the big picture for the utility fund, you'll see how it, that one slice fits into the whole picture.
I understand. It would be easier for me, from my experience, to talk about it in, in context, as opposed to taking it out of context.
Okay.
Just making a comment.
I misunderstood.
It's just a way of, of looking at all this.
Yes. Okay. Shall we move on?
Any other questions on utilities? We'll move on to the general fund. The general fund, capital outlay, again, is the program that we discussed. Kristin, if we could just move to the next slide, and then we can come back. If you'll recall, last year, based on the five-year capital outlay program, we had established a $312,000 annual reserve to be used for capital outlay. Based on this adding fiscal year '20 into it, that capital outlay reserve now needs to move up to an annual assessment of $378,000. And that would be, the, the main change this year was putting the fire apparatus, the second fire truck, not the latter truck that's out... fire truck, not the ladder truck that's out in 2020, that was there always. But the one in 2018 was originally hoped to be funded by 1% sales tax. There just weren't enough funds to stretch that far. So, we've placed it in this program, and that impacted the bottom line. So, we're asking, this will change the policy, the overriding policy to say instead of 312,000 annually, it will now say 378,000 annually. And we all understand that that is a target that will change each year, but at least it gives us a five-year look at what we're doing with replacement. Yes, Rachel?
So, you've taken all this and smoothed it out, basically?
Yes, thank you. Exactly.
So, we're not going, okay, in 2020, we need the $750,000 fire truck?
Right. The funding will be there for it already.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
And this particular policy is probably very good because as we look to the future, we may not have a 1% sales tax anyway to support the funding of these vehicles. So, I think we have talked about that in the past in terms of making sure that those ones are there, so.
And I think that's an excellent point. The city manager had asked us to work on, if you will, weaning ourselves off of the 1% sales tax for capital outlay. And so, you'll see up on this same page for police fleet replacement, we're funding 96,000 of it from the general fund. Previously, that was all funded by 1% sales tax. They will continue for, for the next four years to add in an additional 100,000 a year. But, yes, that is a very good example of how we're trying to, to move back to the general fund, you know, taking and, and actually recognizing that the infrastructure they put into place eventually is going to wear out and will need to be replaced. Kristin, can we go back to the first page and see if, if there are any questions? So, these are all just run-of-the-mill, parks and ground needs to replace mowers and right-of-way needs to replace trucks. I don't, I don't think there are any surprises here at all. On the second page, in your emergency management, you have your police fleet, and in fire, you have another one of your main support vehicles, the fire chief's vehicle is actually, we recycle. That is a hand-me-down police vehicle that the chief uses, and it's on its last legs now.
Yes, Tom?
Sharon, I recall reading someplace in here you have an IT budget and you're implementing or enhancing the GIS system with a different type of system? I don't remember exactly where that was, but could you explain what that's about?
The GIS system, I will, I will let our IT director or manager talk about. I'll let you, you can.
We may not have gotten to it yet.
We did not, but it's okay. We can go ahead and address it.
We can wait until we get there if that's.
He's here now.
Brad Schutte, IT manager. The GIS system, it isn't as much using a new system as improving our use of the system that we already have. There's money budgeted every year for the licensing of the GIS system. And in reviewing, in my review of the licensing, and as I've gotten familiar with the different systems that we have here in the city, part of what I'm trying to work toward is giving us the resources we need to make better use of the GIS licensing that we currently hold.
And the purpose of it is, just to clarify?
Is basically anything geospatial. It'll be using the data that we already gather and being able to represent it in the form of maps or, or charts that'll give us another way of analyzing our data and being able to drive decision-making based on geospatial information.
And this will be within our vehicles? Is that not correct? Isn't that what, what you were referring to?
It's going to be extended that direction. I mean, I believe we use, we try to use it right now in the fire trucks.
Yes, all of those systems, we gather the data right now, and that's part of what we're trying to improve. We have the data. The system has been gathering. We store the data. We have access to the data, but we haven't been doing the best job we could be doing to get that data out and use it in reporting and use it in being able to provide information both to you and to citizens. And so, that's what we're trying to do is, is build up our use, build up the skill sets that we need, build up the support that IT can provide to make the, to maximize our efficiency of that system. Those are skills that we really don't have right now, and that's part of my focus is I want to try and build those skills. And it may eventually lead to the need for additional training, possibly additional staff to really be able to get the most out of it. But to start with, it's just being able to, to maximize our use of the existing tool, and that won't carry any really major changes in the budget we've already been spending.
Okay. Yes, Rachel?
I want to go back to vehicles, so if anybody else has GIS questions.
Okay. Thank you, Brad.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Brad.
One question that I have in looking this, you know, the numbers over, a forklift is 34,000, but a lot of these pickup truck replacements, we have like 20. Is that reasonable? Is that going to, are we doing really good on our piggybacking and our, our, you know, bidding and procurement side? Because some of the numbers seem, for the vehicles, seem kind of low to me.
They, they are low. They are low, and I think that is the piggybacking, but it's also the type of vehicle that they're choosing. We're not looking at the big half-ton trucks that you might be used to seeing. We're actually scaling down to those small trucks that you see like the building department and code enforcement using. They're smaller. So, wherever we can scale down, we are scaling down. If we find that we can't and we run short of money, then the department will have to try and find it. The little bit bigger trucks are run like 24,000. That might be what you're thinking of.
And that's what, we've been pretty good at staying within those?
Yes.
Okay. My other question was, please tell me Johnny Lloyd is getting a new vehicle. Please tell me that that is in there.
I have to see if Tom, Tom.
His poor van is like a 2002, and he's been here how many years? I mean, come on, we need to upgrade this guy into something.
I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's the one, the citizen called in that was concerned about the strange.
It was, wasn't it? Yes, yes, yes. It looks like a creeper van or something, yes.
Absolutely. Sharon made me cut a bunch of stuff, but there was no discussing Johnny's vehicle.
Okay, good. Johnny deserves it. And then, this is for Ray. We were talking about the command vehicle, and I, I recommended a, a command sedan for for Ray, so he's probably not going to like that, but.
We, we will have a nice explanation for you of, of the uniformity of what we need in the fire department, but.
Okay, good.
We do not, we do not purchase vehicles for individuals. We purchase them for position.
And, and the efficiency of the department.
The water distribution manager needs a new vehicle.
There's only one person in that position.
I like the pushpins in the ceiling of the vehicle.
Okay.
Yes, Sharon.
I've just lost my train of thought.
We're up to utilities construction.
Utilities construction. Now, we are into actually the capital outlay or the capital projects. Kristin, if we can just move on. What, what we're showing you here, maybe for the first time, we, we wanted you to look at, we call this Fund 411. It's your utilities construction. This is where you'll find your RO plant. This is where you'll find all your major projects. We wanted to show you the funding for it as well. In the past, we've sort of wrapped it together as a financial, including operations. We're now breaking those two apart for you so you can see them as its own whole big picture. So, the funding, the major funding for the continual replacement of lines and, and standard is the 1,120,000. That funding is coming over directly from your operations fund. That's coming from your user fees for everybody that's paying their water and sewer bills. So, that's built into your rates, which is as it should be. The additional transfer is for the small amount of projects that still need to be funded, and we felt that, that, that that could be absorbed by the rates without causing any hardship on the operating reserve for the operating fund.
Okay, now, this case, you're saying additional transfer or financing? So, financing is not being a part of that?
Do I have financing in what year, in '15? But in, this is only '16 through '20, so we can not show.
Okay, so, sorry, the financing is in the current year in 2015. There is no financing in any of these years, so.
Okay.
We, we struck '15, and we, we could have taken that off. So, that was a good question. The big financing, you'll see, we did identify, and that's for the RO plant. In discussions, we may find that we're going to change this. It depends on how things go with the SRF. We just began phone discussions with them yesterday. We may need to move some of that into '16 because, as you know, there, there's components of the RO plant that have to be done prior to the CMAR beginning. And those two components are the well field and, and the deep injection well. We need to know that both of those will be successful and have been tested before we want to begin construction. But for now, this is adequate, and it, and it works for, for financial planning to show it all, all in '17. So, those, those are your revenue sources, and then your capital projects, which we can go.
Quick question, please. So, does the state revolving fund only apply to construction? Is that what you're saying? Or can we apply for those funds for the wells in the injection system?
Interestingly enough, they, they just choose not to fund well fields. They will not do that. They are happy to do the deep well injection, but it's been on a different path, and it needs to be done sooner than the other project. So, that's why we're talking to them right now, and they, they're, they're favorable to that, and then they'll, at the end, when we're all done, they'll wrap it all into one financing. But they will allow us to borrow it as we need it if we get the, all the public meetings handled. So, we will be having, Dave, did we say August?
Yeah, we tried.
Yes, in August, we'll be planning on doing one public meeting at one of your regular council meetings, and that fits in with what the SRF requirements will be.
Okay, thank you.
The rates are, the rates are very favorable right now. Really.
Yes, very favorable.
What are they?
1.2%.
My goodness. Wonderful.
Now, they did throw in a little caveat when I asked them what their financing fee is because I figured there was one. 2% of the entire project. So, that is a half a million dollars. So, the effective rate.
A little bit more.
Little bit more.
But we would be paying a financing fee to whoever.
Sure we would.
Right.
Okay, moving on to the actual projects themselves. The ones above the line, the 1,120,000 are what you have a financial policy for, which says we'll fund these from our current operating rates. The, the projects down below, if any of them you would like discussed, the director, Tom, is here to do that for you. And of course, you'll see the big project, water treatment plant, the reverse osmosis project is down in the bottom third.
We're going to continue to show it at 32.2 million until we know otherwise.
Yes, sounds like that's appropriate. Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on. General Construction Fund, again, these are now capital projects.
Would you stand there?
Kristin, if we can, oh, I apologize. Did you?
Did you have a question?
The sun is.
Stretching his legs. The General Construction Fund, again, we're going to show you the financing and the expenditures. So, you'll see that a small portion of the funds are coming from the general fund. These are from standard projects that we do year in and year out. If you remember during the economic decline, we asked Public Works if they would consider alternating years for some of these projects rather than doing them each year. So, that's why you see it going up and down, 85,105, then 85,105. At some point in time, we're going to have to take a harder look at those and see if we are perhaps not doing as much as we should do. But we do have some very large drainage projects coming up that are going to be separately funded, and we'll be talking about those. So, at this point in time, these are the routine projects, and we're leaving it alone. We're not coming to you to change that financial policy.
Can you clarify the damage recovery fund prior to the 1% sales tax?
If you'll recall, we had, in the orig, the last six years of the 1% sales tax funding, we had allocated 520,000 towards the 800 megahertz, the big radio replacement project that the county is doing. We will not have a choice. When they say we're moving to the new system, we have to move with them. We're a very small component of a large, large system. We borrowed some of that money because we wanted to do the.
Energy audit.
The energy audit, and, and we have now been in the process of changing out the things that were recommended by them. We have slowly been putting that money back. This is the last 124,000 that we have not yet been able to put back, and we had all decided that we would use the disaster recovery fund if we could not find additional sales tax. I'm still hopeful by the end of the year, I will be able to put another 100,000 of this back. But in case we don't, I'm just putting us all on alert that we may need to use some of these funds. But that was to cover the energy audit.
Okay.
And as you know, we do have some nice MPO grants out in future years to fund some of our projects. We do have, the fire impact fees are strong, I'm sorry, fire, it's actually park, impact fees are strong right now, and it will be able to handle some of the projects that urban design can go into if you'd like to discuss. Transportation impacts unfortunately are rather weak, and it isn't really able to handle the sidewalk program that we desperately need, but we'll do the best we can. So, we'll show you that also. So, this is the list of capital projects. The ones above the line are your standard routine ones funded by the general fund itself. Then you have your grant projects. The transportation impacts is the one I wanted to point out to you. We do have, I believe, urban design had come up with about a $750,000 inventory of sidewalks that are either missing, they're missing links, or there are areas where we are not yet ADA compliant that we need to get to as rapidly as we can. We have $35,000 of funding. That leaves 90,000 unfunded. We just broke it into a five-year plan. And you'll see that at the bottom of the page there. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. That's something we will want to deal with at, at some point.
Sharon, why are you predicting the park impact fees to go down? In, in '16, you have 130, and then you go down to 80.
We're using reserves in the first couple of years, so it's not that they're going to go down. 80 is what we expect to get right now, but we have some reserves that we have not used.
So, you lumped that together.
And we have a project that specifically needs funding that we were proposing.
That we can use those funds for. So, 80 is really what we're collecting.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, move on.
Then you have your one cent, one cent sales tax fund. As you'll recall, this is the, this began in January of 2015. It's a six-year plan. It now is in its very own fund. We've moved it out of the general construction fund just to, for transparency, so it'll be easier to identify. Here's your revenue source, and here are the projects that are being funded. And Kristin, if we can just go to the actual list, you'll see the projects. We've left a few of the 2015 projects on here for you because they are still in the process of either being designed, going out for RFP, or just barely into a purchase order form. So, those are projects that are still ones that you are discussing or staff is discussing.
There.
Yes.
You have $335,000 in 2017 towards the Harbor Walk Fisherman's Village connection. Isn't that 335 a possibility of us not having to incur that cost if the contract goes through?
Possible if we ever get a contract.
If we ever get a contract. Where's Patty today? She didn't show up. And the other, the other question I have for you, we have Baynard Vasco Sidewalk Improvements. What's, what criteria did we use in determining that we need a sidewalk in that particular area?
That is a heavily traveled area with all of the commercial establishments along with the YMCA, the Ponte Gorda Club. A lot of people use it for working out. It's a, a lot of people bike there, they walk there, and it's a connection that doesn't exist. Right now, you have a sidewalk at the new Monty's Restaurant that goes nowhere. We want to connect it from Pompano up to Ria Villa.
Because then it ties into Sri Street Murt as well. Instead, when you get to Airport Road or you have to go in the street.
You have to go to Kea Star, then you take that to the Murt. It is.
It is a hazard. I see a lot of people there. I see a lot of people there.
The Public Works has told me that it's public input primarily that determines-
Yeah, we discussed it at our 1%.
Committee.
Anyway, one final question. Are the complete streets program, is that coordinated with the, with the repaving or is that a standalone project?
Are you looking at the Virginia Avenue Complete Streets? Is that the one you're looking at?
Well, and just, just in general, we're, we're doing complete streets in different, yeah, well, Shreve and Airport and Cooper. This is David Hillston, Urban Design Manager. That would be the favored way of doing it at the time of that funding. So it is on our mind when new streets are being done. Correct.
Any other questions on this?
I hope our grant writer is good because we have applied for a lot of these grants. Hope we get some of that.
And I apologize, when we were going over the pro forma, I did fail to mention that the Seawell project that we're doing this year, you are all aware, will require some short-term financing, which probably means we'll borrow from another fund. But if you look, then it'll be repaid in full by 2017, 2018. So we'll be able to continue on with the rest of the projects.
Yeah, that was what I was going to ask is what was, what were we refinancing? Is that, that's just the, that project?
Just that one specific project.
That is the project?
Yes, the Seawell project.
Cash flow.
Okay. And, and normally we would have let it fall in later, but in order to get that one done and complete so that we could move on with the MPO grant, it was, it was very important. Any other questions? Then we'll move on to just the unfunded list. And we just bring these to your attention because they are, these are partially funded projects. They were up above the line. But due to MPO requirements, they're not fully funded. And so if we get the grants, that will take care of the problem. If we don't and we do the project on our own, then it may be designed at, at the lower level. And last but not least is the information technology projects. We do not have a specific list, I'm sorry, Kristin, can we go to IT? We do not have a specific list for you for this year or for 2016. We, we have the standard 100,000. They have a, an aggressive list of projects that they will be taking to their executive committee to prioritize and determine what, how best to use those funds. We're also hopeful that some of the 1% sales tax funds can be made available to sort of stretch and, and keep everything going.
Yes, Tom?
Sharon, we talk about integrating Sun Guard and the Charlotte County GIS. What, what exactly does that mean?
Oh, that's your question for Brad. We'll let him come back in again.
Brad Schutte, IT manager. It's, it's, that, that's something that was put into the budget or had been listed in the budget before I arrived. So essentially what that is, is a carryover and we're pursuing whether there's a way for us to use county GIS information in our Sun Guard system to further enhance, as I was speaking about earlier, data-driven decision-making so that we're not just taking into account our own isolated, but in areas where it's better to have more data, that there may be a way to, to roll that data into our systems as well. It's just a matter of creating a, a mechanism to download data from theirs and upload it into our Sun Guard system so that it can be used.
Other questions?
We skipped over the unf- the fully unfunded list, if there were any questions on that list. Those are projects that are just still, most all of them, if you'll see, there was a category, they're all applying for grants. The first one, the ADA improvements, we've been told we have to do that transition plan in order to continue seeking any grants. So we're hoping that that will be funded by CDBG. That will be coming back to you in their plan. If not, we'll, we'll have to find alternative funding.
Okay, yes, Tom?
Is it likely that the utility rate study that we are either currently doing or will be doing will have any impact on what we're discussing here today?
Howard, did you want to say something?
Are we doing a utility?
Yes.
Yeah, it's going to confirm whether or not staff's projections of, of rate increases we may need are accurate or not. And it will also let us know whether we, whether we want to do our rate increases over three years, four years? Do we want to change our water and sewer component, our rate structures? So that we put more on the water side because this is an RO plant that we're-
And the study will help us make that decision?
Analyze all of that. So yes, the answer is-
So it may have an impact on what we're working on today?
Not, not the individual projects, but the operating rate structure, most definitely. Yep, sure will.
And the timing of that, just so that you know, they are currently working on it daily. We keep providing them more information. The rate study, the draft, will be done in July. It will be brought to the Utility Advisory Board at their July meeting and it will be brought to you at your August meeting. So it will all be timely for this budget process. And the other thing that's very nicely dovetailing with it is the utility division is also hired an engineering firm to look at their assumptions, Tom, for their growth in the, in the utility system and whether the capacities that we have are adequate. And that study will be done in July as well, just in time to dovetail with, with what our rate study is doing. So we're, we're, we feel like you'll have a very comprehensive look at all of utilities.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, that will conclude that agenda item and let's-
And I think we will take a break.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll take a-